I call this meeting of the City Council, Cedar Wally. Order, please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're looking a little thin tonight on the staff and on the council, but we do have qualms, so Councilmember Judith Dunleavy is away on travel. Brenda is attending to her mother. And Brett, I'm not sure where Brett is because I saw him earlier, but in any case, I'll entertain a motion now to excuse those absences.
Still moved?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse the absences of three council members. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is our consent calendar. We have items A through C tonight. Anybody want anything pulled? Otherwise...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to accept consent calendar items A through C for council meeting September 13th through 17th.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Lemley and seconded by Councilmember Owen to approve the consent calendar items A through C. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And the motion carries. Well, we got a fun thing, and I see a bunch of wastewater treatment plant people back there. So while Seattle's taken abuse, I think they got fined, I guess it was about $330,000 for not managing their plant well. Once again, and it's getting monotonous, we get it almost every year now, but boy, you guys do good. So Debbie, if you want to bring the crew on up, I'd like to present this to you.
How many's this now? About eight in a row? Eight years running?
Pretty awesome.
One break in there somewhere?
Yeah. I think we've got about 15 out of them though.
Fifteen out of 16 years? That's not bad.
This is Mike. So for outstanding performance, Washington State Department of Ecology recognizes the exemplary effort and work accomplished by the City of Cedar Wally and the dedicated team at the Cedar Wally wastewater treatment plant. Thank you for protecting Washington and keeping our waters clean.
You want to say anything about your tan?
Well, this certainly is not a single award. It comes with a lot of managing efforts together, along with the council giving the funding in order for us to do our job. So we all love what we do and take it very seriously. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to be treatment plant operators for the City of Cedar Wally.
And it shows.
So tonight, we have a couple of things that aren't on the agenda, a couple of special speakers. Kevin Loy, Kevin, did you want to talk tonight about the exciting event we had over the weekend and give us a little backfill?
I'm Kevin Loy, 128 Garden of Eden, Cedar Wally. I just wanted to kind of give the City Council a little report. This past weekend, we held our fifth annual Cedar Wally Skateboard Challenge. And the skateboard challenge is a kind of a combination of, we get some hotel motel tax money, the city does some things, I do some stuff, Hidden Wave does some stuff, and Adam McCoy. So it's kind of a little bit of everybody that does it. I kind of asked them to postpone it Saturday because the bowl was wet and better safe than sorry, you know, so Sunday was supposed to be a nice day, so we held the event Sunday. And we had real good turnout, probably, I haven't gotten through all the paperwork, but probably more skaters than we've had before. One of the good things about it is, one of my jobs is to go around and talk to people because I got to fill out a report of how many people from where, and of course, that's impossible. And I think Patsy was right, we're getting a lot more out-of-towners than I thought. I talked to some parents from Seattle, and they do a circuit from around Seattle and go to Port Angeles and all around, and they came and joined us this year. And they said it was the most professionally run operation they've seen the few years they've been doing it, so that's a positive, and they expect to bring more people back next year or so. But the people that came and went, came and went, my estimate was there was around 300 people this year that was there at one time or another, you know, during the, it takes about six hours, it's kind of like, to me, it looks like a, you know, a circus going on, but the people that actually run it know, have a plan behind it. So we had people from diapers to old people there, from all kinds of communities. Skagit Speedway donated nine different trophies, first, second, and third for three different groups. There was thousands and thousands of dollars of gifts to the different skaters that were provided by different manufacturers. It's just turning out to be a positive thing, and it's starting to, like I say, people from Seattle came, and they're going to pass the word. They know every second Saturday of September it'll be here, so it, I was kind of, I was kind of impressed when they said it was the most professionally run they've seen since they've started skating a few years ago, because to me, I don't know anything about it, I just kind of get everybody together. To me, it looks like a Chinese fire drill, but to the people doing it, it's quite organized. So it's a positive thing for the kids, and we had, we actually had adults compete. And I know, I didn't keep track, but I know one young fellow from Snohomish got second place in the intermediate deal, so, I mean, people are coming from out of town, and people are having a good time, and virtually no trouble. I didn't see anything, I didn't even see people smoking cigarettes, anybody smoke a cigarette this year, so. It's, it's, it's getting a little bit better every year, which is what you want, because you don't want big success, you don't want to blow it up, because if you get too big, what are you going to do next year? So little increments, it's getting a little bit better all the time. So the second Saturday of September next year will be the sixth annual one, so.
Well, Kevin, it's really great that you do this, I really appreciate it, and it's those types of events that appeal to different groups of people, that keep downtown vibrant and keeps the town interesting, and people are coming back, so thanks for all you do for...
Well, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm kind of backing away, but I've been teaching people to take my place, people that have a vested interest in it. I just did it because somebody needed to do it. But people that are interested in skateboarding and stuff are, I started kind of spoon-feeding them last year, then, then this year, and then next year, I'm just going to watch. And the big deal is, the hotel motel money is what makes it happen. The city provides a little bit, they do the scaffolding so the judges can see and stuff like that. But the 500 bucks, I mean, we give away free hot dogs and water and different things, so that 500 bucks we get from the motel tax is what makes it live, so. And I've taught a lady how to deal with Patsy and do things ahead of time, instead of be like me, wait till the end. So it should keep going for the foreseeable future, so.
Very good. Any questions or comments from council?
I just want to thank you, Kevin. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, appreciate it.
It's okay.
And next up, we have Mrs. Claus, is that right? See, there, I made a faux pas right there, Jerry's going to tell me about it.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner and council members. Martha Mahouvia here, on behalf of the citizens of Cedar Whuleville. I would like to thank you, first of all, for your wonderful support of our Christmas parade in 2016. And I am here tonight on behalf of the Cedar Wally Chamber of Commerce and the Cedar Whuleville because we are presenting the magic of Christmas, and we appreciate your interest in supporting the brightest event of the year. As you may know, every Who in Whuleville likes Christmas a lot. And the Christmas parade lights up our town and kicks off the holiday season in Cedar Wally. We rely on the generous support from the community. This year, we are also looking at whether we continue the lighted tree branches downtown. Our goal is to enjoy both a successful event and profitable holiday season for our business community. And with that, I'm submitting a request for $5,000.
Why not $5 million?
We'll settle for 15.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mahoulia.
Do you have any questions for me about the event coming up? We have our poster already, it's absolutely beautiful, and our committee has met, we're ahead of schedule, and we're really looking forward to promoting Cedar Whuleville and our Christmas hoopulation this year.
So I do have a question, actually. So you mentioned the lighted tree branches, now that was something that Patrick Janiky helped with.
That's correct.
And you said you're trying to decide whether you're doing that?
Well, the problem is, is we need to have somebody cut them. And Joanne takes care of wiring them all together, they deliver them to her and she takes care of that. They need to be six feet long, and they are usually alder branches. So if you know somebody who has good loppers and a lot of people, or just a few people, we can find where to cut the trees.
Okay.
They're just little, you know, they're easy to cut. It's usually the first...
It's the Monday after Thanksgiving.
The Monday after Thanksgiving.
The tree goes out in the middle of the street. Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, please, so everybody can hear.
So...
State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Paula Kelly, and I'm at 407 State Street here in Cedar Wally. I am also the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. So the tree branches for downtown have been something that have made our town look very festive every year. They're a little bit of extra work on Joanne's part, and you can't understand until you see her do some of these things, how much effort she puts into this project. But she's greatly appreciated. And what Patrick did for the last three years was take care of this project to where we didn't have to round up volunteers, we didn't have to worry about where the branches were coming from. He was using a logging, a logged area where you always get small alders that come up before the fir comes back. So you've planted fir, but alders tend to be ahead of the game. So if you go in and you slash the alders, then your fir trees can grow. And so it was a great, you know, fit for him as Janiky Logging Company to do this, and we do miss him. But we do need to find other people that will take that project on, as well as financial support for the entire, you know, event, so.
Okay, so we'll look around, see if we can find someone, and I'd like to see that continue.
Just have them contact us.
Council, have any questions, comments? Okay.
Do you need my information where I'm from, besides Cedar Wallyville?
That would be nice for the record.
Go ahead and tell them where you're from.
I'm Jerry Kaufman. I live at 16532 Country Club Drive, Burlington, Washington, and I am a Hospital Commissioner for District 304.
Okay, thank you. So that leads us back to item five, which is our public comment period. So if any of you would like to make a public comment, approach the lectern, you have three minutes, and tell us your name and your address, and keep it directed at the council. It's not question and answer period, it's not a time for arguments, just address the council. Ms. Maum, you're first.
Okay, yes, hi, my name is Bonnie Hall, and I live at 801 Fidalgo Street. And I'm here because I'm on the Crop Hunger Walk Committee, and I'm promoting the Crop Hunger Walk. And I had talked with Keith on the phone, and he already knows a little bit about that. It's going to be taking place October 1st, it's a Sunday afternoon at 2:00 in Mount Vernon. And the mayors from Mount Vernon, Burlington, and Cedar Wally have all agreed to walk with us to raise money to fight hunger. The money goes to fight hunger globally, as well as locally, 75% goes to fight hunger globally, which includes disaster relief and clean water. And some of that will also go to support hurricane relief. And then the money that fights hunger locally goes to support all the 16 food banks and meal programs in Skagit County, so that includes Helping Hands here in Cedar Wally, Neighbors in Need in Mount Vernon, Friendship House, and a lot of local food banks and meal programs that really, really need our support. So we're hoping to have over 350 people and raise over $17,000 to be able to fight hunger. And I have with me flyers that I'd like to give to everyone with our website on it. The walk's only 3.4 miles, so it's pretty doable for most people, but there is a smaller two-mile family loop for people with small children. Strollers are welcome. It starts at Mount Vernon Christian School on Blackburn, it goes downtown Mount Vernon up to the Lions Park and back. And people can register online ahead of time, if, make a donation, donations are optional, will never turn away a willing rocker whether they make a donation or not. And people can bring their friends, they can register the date of, if they don't register early, that's fine, too. And as a thank you for you, Mr. Wagner, I have a Crop Hunger Walk T-shirt, which I'd like to give you.
Oh, thank you, that's great.
We're appreciative of you walking with us.
Thank you very much.
And I also have flyers, can I hand these to the council members?
You may, and you may leave some on the back for everybody else, if you like.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Are there any questions, or is that...
Any questions, council?
The only, the only thing is, there might, not to throw a wrench into plans, but I think that's the same weekend as the Farm Festival starts.
It's, it is that weekend, but they're done Sunday afternoon. So, in fact, it's really good timing, because the, the farms close at 3:00, our walk is at 2:00, but most people are wrapped up by them. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Anybody else for a public comment period? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dennis O'Neil, I reside at 109 Telkot Street, Cedar Wally. And two items, when we have the candidate forum, I'd sure appreciate if we had a clock facing us, or maybe sitting out here so we can keep track of the passage of time. It caught me by surprise a number of times when we were trying to address questions, and we didn't know where we were at until Pat was telling us we're out of time. I mentioned this to Dawn earlier, saw him today, in fact, talked to him about it. So hopefully, we'll have access to that clock that seemed to be sitting up on the other side, right in front of me, but not in use during the candidate forum, which was a big disappointment. The second thing was, when Aaron introduced this, the new way the council's going to operate, I know that Brett brought up a number for about five minutes, he talked about letting people get answers to the questions they posed to the council members, of course, and it doesn't happen here. I know one of the cities, I think it's Mount Vernon, does a lot, or has two public comment sessions, one at the beginning, one at the last. I never got everything from their city attorney, I was sitting away to get a haircut, and he was telling me how they worked it down there. It would be really nice if we didn't come up here and just talked, I mean, there's really not much point in bringing issues up if they can't be addressed by the council when the people are here. And they really do that, really bothers me. It's one of the reasons I'm running for election, because I like to see it changed, and it's just not, nobody seems to understand that, that it was nice that Julie mentioned about the sidewalk, because it took one issue off the aggravation sometimes we feel out here. And I think you're going to feel some of this when you're not up there as one of the council members and have problems with the way things are going, and you can't get an answer. And it's not really convenient for a lot of people to schedule a meeting with the mayor or Aaron to get this addressed, and it'd be really nice if it could be addressed at the time the questions come up, came up. I looked through this really quickly, and I know it was a big issue on Wednesday night, and there's nothing in here about it. So I don't know if there's going to be any change there or not, the way it looks now, it doesn't look like there is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else for the public comment period? Bill?
My name's Philip Murray, I live at 223 State Street, Cedar Wally. And I'm talking about sidewalks and the ramps for wheelchairs. One day, I heard a bunch of noise out there, and I looked, went out to the corner of Metcalf and wag Warner, and they were chipping about 3/4 of an inch of a rise from the road to the ramp. And now, the paint is off of it, so you can't even tell the height difference, and it is rougher than a cob, it looks like a rat chewed on the things, all four corners. And if that 3/4 of an inch, it was about 3/4 of an inch too high, now it's about a half inch high. If that little bit made that big of a difference, I can imagine what curbs on the corners without any ramps can do. And if I'm not mistaken, when I was walking around town, looking at them, they have ramps going out to the street, and on the other side, if I'm not mistaken, you're supposed to have a ramp on the other side, and some of these do not have ramps, it's a curb. And I believe it's the rules that you have to have them. If you have a ramp on one side, you have to have it on the other. And those need to be addressed, and these sidewalks in this town are just horrible. I ask every one of you to hop in a wheelchair, go down State Street on one side, go up to Township, turn around, and come back the other side. It's impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else for a public comment period? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment period, and let's see, we have no public hearings. Unfinished business, item six, is the library consortium interlocal agreement with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District. It's a second reading, and that's on page 26 through 32 of your packets, council. And Aaron, you going to introduce that?
I've got nothing further to add. This item, I think, was, was ready for action last time, it's here tonight solely for the two-reading rule.
So the recommended motion is at the bottom of page 26.
I make a motion to approve the attached interlocal agreement with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District, providing the district with access to the city's ILS. Seconded.
The motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, to approve the attached interlocal agreement with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District, providing district with access to the city's ILS. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to make one comment, I know there's been concern to privacy, but I believe all libraries are held to a strict standard of privacy, so I think any concern with privacy issues, you know, all libraries are supposed to, you know, maintain records confidentially, you know, with confidentiality, so I think this is a good idea.
Very good. Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And it carries unanimously. Item seven, a resolution adopting the City Council's Governance Handbook. This is a second reading, page 34 to 75.
Okay, on page 33, the modifications that are in this version from the last version are listed, there were four. One on page 6, B1A3, is a reference to the Mayor Pro Tem, clarifying that the Mayor Pro Tem is to be addressed as the Mayor Pro Tem when acting in the capacity as Mayor Pro Tem. Page 7, J1A, this is the language that Dennis was referencing, in the additional language following the public comment section, which ends on that page with a comment that the, that the presiding officer may ask, that the item brought to the attention of the council by the members of the public could either be placed on a future agenda for follow-up or addressed to staff for follow-up. This is an addition that would come after that, that says the presiding officer may ask council or staff to address factual issues raised by public comments if appropriate. Page 8, J1C, just kind of a reminder that a council meeting is indeed a meeting of the council that occurs in public, but it is not intended to be soapbox forum, so the additional language is, a council meeting is a business meeting of the city and is not intended as a public forum. And on page 8, J2, in reference to written comments from members of the public, it's a reminder that written, quote, "written comments" should clearly state that they are intended for the full council to ensure inclusion in the council packet. This is to address comments that sometimes come to a particular member, so if somebody wants the comment to go to the whole council, we will always give it to the whole council. This is just saying, hey, tell us that, and we'll make that happen. So those are the four changes that came following the work session review at the last meeting, and I don't really have anything else to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has a question.
Council?
The second change and the third change, the page 7, J1A, and the page 8, J, is there a way that those two could kind of contradict each other, or, it kind of seems like sometimes that could be kind of contradictory?
I don't think so. So the, the reference here is that in page 7, J1A, there's a place on the agenda where the public is invited to comment on topics of their interests that are not otherwise on the agenda. I guess the, the point that page 8, J1C is making is that, you know, when you come to the council meeting, the expectation is that you're addressing business that's appropriate for the city council, and there are certain things that you can't address. For example, in this season, you can't come to the mic and tell the city council why you're running for public office. You know, that is expressly prohibited under state law. So it's just a reminder that this is not the soapbox at Hammer Square, where you can stand up and, you know, do what you want at Speaker's Corner, you know, at Hyde Park. It's, it's, you know, it's a limited opportunity to speak, and that, and that that's prescribed both by your rules and also by state law. So I don't think they're contradictory.
Okay.
So I just want to thank the committee for all the work they've done over the last year, and we knew that we have traditionally not been following, for a long time, the ordinance on how we do our meetings, and we also wanted to give a little more opportunity for public input, and this change is going to allow for that. It now allows people on the first reading to talk about things that are on the agenda, where we have not done that in the past. So I think that's an important change, it might make the meetings a little bit longer, but allows people that first bite at the apple, in addition to public comment time. At the same time, we have to control the meeting and make sure that it moves along so we can do the business. I think this is a very good document, we'll give it a try. The order will be different if you come back. We're going to, we're going to start things off with council and reports, and instead of waiting till the end, because a lot of times, I think people, you know, get hungry and have to go, and then they never hear what everybody has to say. So we'll see how it goes. So the recommended motion is on page 33, the next resolution number is 972-17.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 972-17, a resolution adopting the City Council Governance Handbook. Seconded.
The motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie, to adopt Resolution 972-17, a resolution adopting the City Council Governance Handbook. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment, because it was brought up by the public regarding the three-minute versus the five-minute public opportunity to get up and speak, and we did address that as a committee. The reason that we didn't move forward with it is because we believed, as you had stated, that we wanted to keep the meeting on time, but also because if there was something that requires a lengthy statement, having it written out would be much easier for us to look at, address, either at that meeting or at another meeting.
Very well. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries.
Well, look for a fresh agenda at your, at your next meeting. Well, look for a fresh agenda at your, at your next meeting.
Well, and I'll take this opportunity to remind people, we only have three meetings a month, two, two meetings that are council meetings and a work meeting. You have every other day of the month to address council members individually or come see me, and we're always available. So I don't think you'll get a lot more than three minutes if you come see me, if you have things to say, so. And I always see everybody. Okay, that moves us on to committee reports. And they're a little light. We have all the important people, right, Chief? You're up.
We have all we need. Well, questions come up recently, CO2 issues with the Ford Explorer SUVs that we've got. We've got one car that's been down-checked for about ten days now, waiting to get in to get that resolved. We borrowed the CO2 meter from the fire department, and we had a serious CO2 problem leaking into the passenger compartment of one of our patrol vehicles. And it's kind of a known problem that either is there completely or not at all in some of these rigs. So we're working with Ford to get that fixed, and Sergeant Harris got a bunch of CO2 meters to put in the cars to help monitor them. On another thing, the question about our homeless folks in town keeps coming up. As people have probably seen, our two most popular are back in town and in fine form, hanging out on the benches downtown. We've tried to address issues with them, tried to point them in different directions, but we've still got that core group of people that we're dealing with. I just put two truckloads of garbage in the can out back from a homeless camp that was out by the football fields, out by Jenicki Fields. We're trying to find out where they are and what the issues are. Are they where they can be? Are they causing problems? And are there things we can do with them and for them? I spoke with Greg Von Fempe. He's the administrator of Telecare up at the Swift Center, and his wife is the social worker that's embedded with the Mount Vernon Police Department. So we're going to make some contact with her and see if she's got some ideas for other things that we can do. We're kind of exhausting our abilities on, on some of these issues. So we're working with, we're trying to find, taking another step, a different, a different direction with our, some of our homeless folks. We've started doing background checks on two, for two open positions that we have. We just found out that Officer Rhonda Lasley worked out the details and is going to be retiring. What's the actual date, Aaron? Is it the end of the month, or?
No, it's September twenty-first.
So September twenty-first, she'll be officially retired from the Seeta Woolley Police Department, and we're going to have a party. We'll put out invitations for everybody that's going to be involved. But that's perfect timing, because we already have our list of candidates for an open position, and we've got two or three pretty good people on there that we're looking at right now. So we're doing backgrounds on them right now, and in the next, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be closer to making a decision and seeing if we can get somebody off to the academy soon after. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Other chief?
Well, Mayor, it's good to be back. I was on vacation for a while, but we're real excited at the department. We have Frank Wagner will be starting Monday. He'll be taking over that assistant chief's position in charge of the EMS, and the department's excited, and we really appreciate bringing him on board. This week, or I should say, the beginning next week, we'll be starting our pump tests if anybody's interested. We invite everybody every year to come on up to Station Two and watch them test the pumps on the truck. You swear they're going to break them, but they, they don't. But you'll see trucks coming from all over the county, coming up there and going through the test. And just so you know, we really appreciate the volunteer. We gave to the entire volunteer association last week, the proclamation thanking them for their hard work, for those, doing all those calls in that, down that one day. So you know, we've done it again. So they had to have many against Saturday. So they're, they're, those guys, if you see any of the volunteers out there, thank them. These guys are doing such an incredible job. I, I can't praise them enough for the amount of work that they're having to put in and for what little they get out of this. They're doing a fantastic job. And the highlight of the day, I got a text from my daughter-in-law. My granddaughter said Papa. She was looking for Papa today, so that's all I have.
May I talk about your fundraiser thing and not?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Coming up on the seventh of October is our annual Give Burnt's Boot. The funds proceeds go to the Phoenix Foundation, and I'm trying to remember, how many years has this been going on?
Thirty-five or something.
Thirty-five or something like that, and, and we've given now, gosh, I want to say close to half a million dollars to the Phoenix Foundation for the children, and it's all, all we get is just donations from the community through our auction. So everybody's invited. You're welcome. We'll have tickets, anybody wants to come. It's a great time. Dinner this year's by Olive Garden, and they're donating their dinner, so it'll be great, great food, so.
Thank you, Chief. Aaron?
Yeah, just a reminder that the library open house with the architect team is a week from tonight, Wednesday, the twentieth, six-thirty to eight-thirty PM here at City Hall. You've got the poster in your packet. That poster's been on the Facebook pages. It's around town. And also on the poster is a link to the Survey Monkey survey for the new library. So, you know, encourage anybody you can to get their information in. The whole purpose of this meeting is to hear from the community about their, you know, hopes and dreams for a new library, to help inform the architectural team as it works with the pre-design committee to bring you back a recommendation on the design, location, and budget. Timeline's on page eighty-three. You know, that's something that could obviously slip, or, or I don't see it getting faster, but it could take a little longer, depending on how everything goes at each of the phases. We're getting pretty close to needing to identify a site and to assist a network. The pre-design committee has, has asked me to put out a, an RFP in the local newspaper and on the website, really any place that you think would make sense for property owners to respond to. RFP specifically details the minimum conditions of the site, and really asks people to say, I've got one, consider my place, here's what I want for it. For, for folks who don't own property but have good ideas, the RFP doesn't quite fit, but certainly letters could be written to the pre-design committee to say, you know, you ought to take a look at this site that I don't own and have no idea if it's for sale or not. You know, we have to be creative and flexible and trying to identify the sites that make sense. The committee's intent is to hopefully get some information from the RFP that isn't readily available, sites that may not be listed for sale, for example, and then run those through a ranking process based upon the criteria that, you know, is essentially laid out in the agreements already, to come up with a recommendation.
Thanks.
So I think that's about it on the library report. Lots of other things going on. I think that the mayor may fill you in on the recent hire at the county of a new DEM director and a new EMS director.
But I can't pronounce his name, so it's hard.
Yeah, I'm going to leave that one for you. Otherwise, just a busy, busy time, lots going on, and I won't see you at the next council meeting, so you can speed it up by at least four minutes.
Here we go. Jermaine?
So, kind of on a sad note, about the shooting in Spokane at the school this morning, what, second weekend to school, it made me think about how lucky we are that we were able to spend some money and kind of do that run-through here in town. It made me feel a lot safer, knowing that we had gone through that and done that and spent the money on that. And so I just wanted to thank everybody who put that together and did that. I'm sorry I couldn't participate in that, but I'm glad we did it. Another thing was, this Saturday, Secret Harbor is, Secret Harbor Foster Care Agency out of Burlington is doing their fundraiser. It's not really a fundraiser this time. They're just kind of, it's kind of a, just networking kind of thing. I think they are auctioning off a football that Jimmy Graham signed, and that's at five-thirty on Saturday at the Swindermish Casino. FYI, that's it.
Thank you. Julia?
I just want to bring to everybody's attention, you're probably, you're probably going to hear both Jermaine and I talk about this until it happens, and that is the Spirit of Hope Breakfast that Community Action puts on. It's going to happen on October twelfth this year, and it's rather exciting because the mayor of Everett is going to be there, and as you know, he's actually working, as they put it here, addressing street-level social issues, which is something that's actually hitting our town and every town really across America. So it'll be fascinating to hear what he has to say. I think you also know that they also decided to sue the pharmaceutical company that was putting out opioids, so that's something that's really groundbreaking. Anyway, it's going to be October twelfth. It'll be early in the morning. It's from eight to nine. It's an opportunity for you to have a chance to hear what this mayor is doing and also to hear about what's going on with Community Action. There's some exciting things going on there. They're wanting to move into a much, much-needed, bigger building. So just to give you a heads up, start thinking about it. The invitations went out this week, so if you haven't received one, go on to communityaction.org Skagit County, and you'll be able to find more information on it. And I just wanted to make everybody aware that I won't be here for the next two sessions, council sessions either, so.
Okay. Thank you, Julia. Chuck?
I just want to remind everybody about the Beer Fest. I think that's the twenty-third, and you can go down and drink forty ounces of beer for twenty-five bucks, and you get drunk and rowdy. I'm sure the police department will take care of you. So anyway, it's a good thing, it's a benefit to the food bank, so if you can, attend.
Thanks, Chuck.
Tucker, did you order extra citation books? Got extra citation books coming in?
Oh, we got, we can print them.
Okay. And last weekend, in conjunction, I guess, with the skate park, with Founder's Day, museum had an open house, modified lifestyles, pretty well pulled off the car show, had a hundred-and-thirty-five cars down there, which wasn't bad considering Saturday was kind of, kind of crummy, but yeah, they pulled it off, and for the most part, it looks like they're coming back again next year, right, Paula? Or have you heard?
I haven't heard.
Yeah, okay, that's what we've heard. And your barbecue went okay? I didn't talk about that.
That wasn't last.
That's, oh, that's museum, yeah.
It was basic.
We're getting a thumbs up for the barbecue for the museum, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so. So that event has changed in the past couple of years, but we'll figure out something to bring it back to life.
Very good. Brett? No? Okay, so, yeah, I enjoyed the car show, but they, we got to have the mayor's choice car this year, so. I did remind them, hopefully, it was a great car show. It was, it was nice to go down there and eat a hot dog and support the museum. Also today, Chief Tucker hosted a little barbecue appreciation for our citizens patrol people. I don't know if you know, but we do a citizens patrol. We provide a car and uniforms for people who do security checks when people are on vacation, drive around the city, and we really get a lot of bang for our buck because of their presence, just the presence of people driving around with a car that looks official, and they've got a radio, and they know how to respond to things. It's, it's pretty important, so thanks for doing that for those people. It was a good time, and I think they really appreciate it. So Founder's Day, oh, also on the twenty-third, if you're not at the Beer Fest, it's the Second Annual Brad Conne Seeta Woolley Community Day at Safeco Field. I don't know if you guys all remember Brad Conne, another great Burlington ass and high school graduate who passed away too soon, and you can buy tickets to go to the game at Safeco. One of our boys will be throwing out the pitch. It says view level tickets are eighteen dollars, or main level tickets are thirty-three dollars. So I'm not sure if I can go, but I'll buy a couple of tickets, and then if you can't go, you can gift them to the Boys and Girls Club and send one of those kids instead. It's a great cause, and, you know, Brad was, did great things for our kids for years and years, and it's a very appropriate way to remember him. So if you need more information on that, you can talk to me after. Any other ways? Without objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.